Order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jamie Kendall.
Present.
Darcy McSwain. Paul Jenderski.
Here.
Edgar Tidoff.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
Troy Free.
Present.
Approval adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to add letter F, MML core legislative principles on your desk.
Letter F, where am I gonna put that in?
New business.
Okay. Say that again.
MML core legislative principles.
Announcement of public comment? Spicer engineer report?
Excuse me, I believe everyone should have received the copy of the engineering report. Wrapped quite a bit up for last month, drinking water asset management grant, that's done, we're gonna submit our last disbursement this week. Probably next meeting, we'll go through the briefly through the asset management plan that was completed, and I'll provide Hart copies of that. Phase one, air construction, all the paving was complete, driveways, we're giving it a couple weeks here, see what grass grows, we'll go back, we'll do a punch list, touch anything that needs to be touched up, and that project will be complete. We did finish under budget, there is some remaining contingency left. We gotta meet with Hart and the county to see kinda what our next steps are and what we can actually use the money for, just given the project sculpt and where we're at with it. Twenty twenty-five water system improvements that we've been working on, we did field walkthrough with DPW. We have made corrections based on some slight field modifications, and we will continue moving that forward. On the rural development application side of it, we're still waiting to hear back on our archaeological report that has to be complete for the state so we can keep it moving forward. Safe routes, no word on that, still waiting to hear it. We've got a little bit of time shooting some elevations on Ithaca Road and provided Hart the information for that. It looks like some minor ditching could be done to solve some flooding issues or water, sitting water issues. Other than that, does anyone have any questions for me?
Timeline on the ditch?
Timeline on the ditch.
Before we get started at phase two, or anything else, finishing up on phase one?
Did it on Ithaca Road?
Yeah.
I have no timeline on that, I just, we just grabbed some elevations quick, we shot a benchmark in the road and-
So you already kinda got an idea?
Spot elevation, I, yep.
Okay.
Good.
Would we forget Hart anything?
No, more so about the contingency, just to see what we can do with that, I think we had two hundred and thirty thousand in contingency that unused, so do we go after more water-led service lines, or do we use that as a payment towards the county?
Is there anything else we could use it for?
Probably those two things.
I think that's what our meeting probably with the county and the bonding attorney is gonna discuss, where the money can be used and what makes the most sense.
If we can expand a little bit, maybe we expand a little bit, and then phase two is, we can cut back on phase two and move, expand this way, so that's kinda what we're gonna look at, but under budget, kinda on schedule.
See, we can't use that money for anything else, we have to use it for-
Yeah, they gave it to us based on phase one, so.
Great job.
Any other question?
Thanks, Michelle.
Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job, Mitch.
Thanks.
So good job.
Eric.
Eric.
Council minutes approval for June twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Make motion, we accept the minutes from the regular meeting of June twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission committee reports, DDA did not meet in July. Parks and Recreation Committee, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the Central Parks Recreation Committee meeting minutes from the Monday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Planning Commission, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the Planning Commission for June twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications. I W A, Mayor's Annual Actual Evaluation.
So, you're gonna receive our pension and OPEB information, OPEB normally marked pensions in summer, and then our audit is in the summer, and Ken Bertham will be here next month to go over the financial statements of the village. This is just an update from MERS on our pension system, we're up to seventy-seven percent funded, three percent change. The good news is we're going up, the bad news is the state legislature gave money to all the municipalities under sixty percent to get them up to sixty percent, whereas in September of twenty nineteen, we made a concerted effort to start paying it down using our own funds, well, it's not popular, it's not fun, but the good news is our liabilities are decreasing, and so eventually, like I said, I've said this time and time again, twenty, thirty-four to twenty forty, you're not gonna have to pay towards pensions, so. We'll be a hundred percent funded and we'll be in a good spot, so I submitted all of our information to the state for their records, it'll be on our website as required by law, so. It's not fun paying your bills, but you gotta do it. I would bring definitely the audit next month, if you want another copy, just let me know. But they'll, they'll normally send binded copies for everybody that we'll put in your packet, so.
Item B, make up the common report.
More of the same, conservative effort to try to get us up to funding level. Our assets are growing, our liabilities are shrinking, but it's still not enough. We are thirty-six point four or five percent funded, when I got here, we were under five, so.
Other than pension plans?
Pardon?
Says other than pension plan.
Yep, this is the OPEB, other post-
So that's everybody that's not getting a pension, is every single-
This is for healthcare.
Oh, healthcare. Just post-employment benefits, okay?
Yep.
Other than pensions.
Yep. If the state legislature decides to get everybody funding up to sixty percent on this, we will go after it.
Item C, audit.
You have a full copy, we have Ken Bertham, I sent you an electronic copy, but we'll have a binded nice copy for next month, and Ken will be here to go over the numbers with you.
Yeah, some of them that you sent us, I mean-
Yep, so.
For me, it'd be better if you just printed it out, put it in the packet, because trying to make it bigger and bag it, it's harder to-
Absolutely, so we'll have binded nice copies for you next month, and Ken will be able to answer any questions you have regarding the village financial statement. Based on just rough numbers, it looks like we underspent our budget and our assets increased, so. We're doing the right things, it's just not popular all the time. Sometimes you wanna throw a pizza party, but you gotta pay your bills.
Speaking of that, paying with queens.
Thought we tested the water ourselves here, when we test the water down?
We, we test for chlorine, we give all the other tests through the state of Michigan lab and the city-
Water sample testing.
There's four tests a year we have to do, is it a hundred and fifty bucks, is that what it says?
Hundred and seventy-five. Not a lot.
That's our disinfection by products, we have to do that four times a year.
What is the laboratory services you got on here, eight forty, eight forty, eight forty per computer, I don't know why you don't have it together.
What page are you on?
Yeah.
It's about redoing, testing samples everywhere.
Is this the same guy, Filthow and all those guys?
For the samples through the dune for discharge.
The what?
Redoing samples for discharge.
Three different times, eight hundred and forty bucks?
I feel like we've talked about this numerous times.
Well, I wanna hear it again.
Every time we discharge, we have to-
Maybe you should study your packet before you come.
Well, maybe I did.
Hey, whoa, whoa.
That's why I'm asking a question, 'cause why the heck are we doing it three times, we doing it three times in a month?
No, they just sent the bills all together.
Oh, that's why I'm asking, I'm like, why did we have it three times on here?
We discharged twice a year, and it's usually two sets of samples for-
This, this was funny.
Yep, so one's for Daniel Eskamia, one's for Michael Filthow, and the other's for, I can't think of the last guy's name.
Yeah, it's on here.
Rodney.
Rodney.
And two.
Yeah. How often do, does that occur?
Well, we discharge twice a year, but there's usually about seven or eight samples per cell, so there's usually fourteen, fifteen samples each time, so about thirty samples a year probably, all together.
Yeah. The fishing pier, eighteen thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
That's the DDA funds.
That's not coming out of our pockets?
Correct.
Okay, and then to put it in, another six grand? Six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, right? It's about something we couldn't do.
All the facade grant, that was for the Masonic Lodge, that one?
Oh, I-
Their new roof.
Maybe it's not what I'm looking at, not what I was talking about, but yeah, I see it somewhere there, how much was it for them to actually put it in? The dock was actually the eighteen thousand, correct?
That's the fishing pier.
Okay, then how much was it to put it in?
We were not there yet.
Oh, I thought you already had it on here.
Nope.
I seen something somewhere, maybe that wasn't it.
That's a deposit to move forward, if we're gonna do it this year.
And the waste authority, why do we have like, I just don't understand why we have three different waste authorities here, you go one for the solid waste, I get that, why aren't we having the same guys do it? Is it more expensive to have them do the other waste services here?
No, we're part of an authority, so the entire county, and they're looking at adding counties so that our prices remain lower.
That's what I was asking.
Yep.
So to have these other guys do it?
Fun fact that I found interesting, GFL's been bought out by Priority Waste, so Priority Waste is out of Metro Detroit, they now have over seventy-plus municipalities, and they are now the largest refuse collection service in the state of Michigan in only six years, which tells me there's some mafia backing. Joking, but probably likely, you don't get that, you don't go to number one in six years unless you're backed by some big people, so they just bought out Green for Life for GFL.
It's supposed to be their trucks, PFL, so, in fact, we just had them open to the neighbors.
So they'll be switching over to Priority Waste in the very near future.
And then there's the drone show.
Yes.
Ten thousand dollars.
And that is half of it, and the DDA wants-
I'm not going for that, you could spend that money way better somewhere else, kids' equipment down there that you ripped out, something, ten thousand dollars for a ten-minute show, ridiculous.
I'll let the DDA know you disapprove.
I definitely disapprove, strongly disapprove. I mean, we, you could spend that money way better somewhere else, really, that's ridiculous. Ten thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, and you start doing it every year, add it up over ten years, that's a lot of money. I, I, you know, I'm not going for that at all. No way.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills for the month of June in the amount of hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars, sixty-eight cents.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? New business. I W A, National Multiple Carosis Society, new bike-
So every, every August, this bike group comes through, they have, it's not like the four hundred people that were here on the twenty-fifth, it's a little different, they just use the pavilion and come up, come and go as they please, but it's just a notice, kinda let village businesses know we'll have probably two hundred people in town, they'll probably use the restroom at Lumberjack and then be on their way, but just a nice group that fundraises for MS. So just need your approval for them to allow them to use Lumberjack Park on those dates. The cyclists have an option to travel thirty, fifty, seventy-five, or a hundred miles each day, it's kinda just a ni- nice event to raise funds.
They won't miss fund on the night?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the disbursement facilities to the bike, bikeless.
Not support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item B, playground boss.
Sending down a photo of one of our ADA compliant swings and the broken piece from our new playground. I reached out to the vendor, who reached out to the manufacturer to try to give us a new swing for free, they said this is an act of vandalism, based on the photos that we provided. For the swing to have that kind of damage, somebody would've had to push down on the yoke in its upright position from the back, causing it to become loose from the swing. So what they did is they were offering us fifty percent to purchase a new one, which would be nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, including shipping.
Four hundred and seventy-five with that as shipping? You couldn't find something closer for nine hundred and twenty-one dollars?
This is the company that provided the playscape, yeah.
Nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for a swing?
Yes, for ADA compliant swing, which is used pretty regularly. Or handicap accessible.
Four forty-six for the swing, and four hundred and seventy-five-
It was gone the other day. Yep, it wasn't safe, we try to fix up all the swings regularly as we get notice, the Parks Committee has some members that use the parks every day, and they keep us abreast of anything. Unfortunately, this is the price of a nice swing. Start babysitting the parks. It's been less than a year that we've had it. That's why I was hoping, hoping for some kind of warranty or manufacturer's warranty.
There is no warranty on it?
Not for accidentalism.
Plastic.
Wow. Is there some way you can have that checked off to see if it was actually dangling or you can't?
How would I prove it?
Okay, I'm just-
Right.
I'm just asking.
Surveillance cameras coming, big brothers watching.
So is that gonna be your excuse every time something goes wrong with that piece of equipment?
Probably not, but based on the photos, they can only make this assumption as well. But I feel like I did see people in the parking space, I mean, it's getting used, I don't know.
By appropriate people who need it.
Was there any damage around it?
Is there a place, if this, if we go ahead and approve this and buy it, if it happens again, six months from now, a year from now, do we have other options we can?
Probably just remove it completely and see what else we can substitute with, if you wanna try to do that now, I'd be happy to do that as well.
I'd do that, it's solid red, see, probably looking at it, it's just plastic crap anyways.
Do we have anything up there right now that's ADA compliant?
We have one other swing that matches that one.
On the same structure?
Mm-hmm.
Just bad when the shipping is more than the whole playground is, I mean.
I can't control those numbers.
I don't know, it's just crazy.
Those have changed a lot over the past few years as well.
So there is another swing up there yet?
There is one more, yeah.
I make a motion that we leave it the way it is, if we were out.
Yeah, I think we need to locate it a little deeper, so we can do, maybe just replace the old thing, something a little more local.
I'll support that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item C, DDA fishing pier.
That's where I got the six thousand, six thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Yep. For charge for delivery, assembly, and in-water installation. So the DDA, trying to be good stewards and good partners with the village council and the village of St. Charles, trying to bring people to the village, trying to provide amenities that maybe we do not otherwise have support or money for, has offered to pay fifty percent of a new fishing pier down at Lumberjack Park. The total of the fishing pier is now thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, it is the same type of structure as the kayak launch that we would put down from there, so. They are willing to pay half, if you're willing, the Parks and Rec Committee recommended your support of this, as it, they do have funds, this is part of the Parks and Rec five-year plan that you approved on January eleventh of twenty twenty-three. Just for your note.
Take it out of our drone funds.
That's a different fund, that's a DDA fund.
No, but where is this gonna be put at now, is it gonna be right down by the train bridge, or is it gonna be?
The thought was further down, towards your mother's house.
I think it's more accessible down by the train bridge, it's more flat, and there's old tree roots and nasties down there, you'd have to make another ramp down there, don't you think?
Yep, we would have to do that. Ultimately, you could determine where you'd like it, but also, I'd like the company to come out and look, obviously to see what's feasible, and then I'd like to talk to people that actually fish and see what's a good spot. I don't need people fishing on kayaks.
Drew that earlier. Here's the parking lot up top, here's the existing, what do you wanna call it, driveway? So you're talking along the river, this is where the existing one is, this is where the kayak launch is, so you're saying put it down farther down river?
That's what, that's what the DDA would recommend, but obviously, they're just the fiduciary of the development fund.
So you're still talking about putting a drive-in all the way along through there and getting rid of all this, you got rid of all the playground, correct?
It's in the, in the talks, yes.
So, so what are you gonna do with all the extra ground, are you ever gonna put, put equipment back in there?
Well, the boat launch, you have the kayak launch and the fishing pier, I think you have swings that are starting to be put up down there and benches, I think that-
We talked about putting a, putting a parking lot right here where you took the, the swing set and that, all right?
Mm-hmm.
We talked about right here where you got a handicap thing bringing it all the way down past these trees and all that right there could be parking lot, you could literally put boats and trucks, you could probably put eight, ten of them in there. I've never seen it that full, and if you did, you could utilize this parking lot here, you said you got all that space to put picnic tables in it or whatever, and like Kathy and I, you had talked about, make a drive going all the way down along there, so that you can utilize the boat launch, you can utilize the kayak launch, and then you just pull right up there, park your stuff, if you have to back right down or go back around, load your stuff up, so you can still have that ground for playground or whatever you want.
Can you do me a favor and point it there again, right at the kayak launch, you say boom, like you're John Madden?
What are you talking about? Just where you go put the boat launch is? This is all nasty, jagged, willow trees and stuff, I'm just saying, we have, actually have room here, you can still access the kayak launch and even the boat launch. You back your boat in right there, you can still be on the dock and launching your boat, and everybody uses that, I mean, to make a new one would just cost us more money, it don't make a lot of sense, so.
Is it gonna be removed in the wintertime like the kayak launch?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Same structure.
Were able to put it back in?
Yes, sir. That way it gets you out of a lot of the permitting, the erosion, and the soil samples that you'd have to do if it was a permanent structure through the DNR, as it is the river, public riverway. And this is action item number two, as far as the five-year plan, and the Parks and Rec, number one was the playscape.
How much of that plate, what did you actually use down the park, that we took from down there, all of it?
Not, none yet.
Yeah.
It's behind the DPW barn, I believe, needs a power washing and some fixing up.
Excellent.
I used to see the five-year plans coming to light.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Fisherman Pier at Lumberjack Park.
Support.
Roll call, roll, please.
Jamie Kendall.
Yes.
Darcy McSwain.
Yes.
Paul Jenderski.
Yeah.
Edgar Tidoff.
Yes.
Michael Nesbit.
Yes.
Kathy Harris.
Yes.
And Troy Free.
Yeah.
Item D, MML fund trustee election.
This is just something I bring to you yearly, three appointees to the Workers Compensation Fund of the MML. If you have anybody else in mind or know any other managers you'd recommend, I can do that for you, I do know Dan Cost from City Administrator DeWitt, great guy, a lot of experience.
We don't know these guys, it's pretty hard to vote for them.
Right, I know Dan, but I don't know the others, if you'd like me to add people that I know in the field, I'd be happy to do so, write in ballots. But normally, I just accept you guys' approval to make this decision for you, we're part of a pool in the workers' comp, it's helped us out a lot in saving money over the years.
I make a motion we allow Hart to choose what he would like.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item E, Construction Board of Appeals.
As you know, we're going through a two-year code rewrite, the Planning Commission put in a lot of work to do the zoning rewrite, we're in the midst of the code rewrite, and as you probably saw in the Planning Commission meeting minutes, that we don't have a Construction Board of Appeals, we have a Zoning Board of Appeals, but our own bylaws say that we should have a Construction Board of Appeals, the purpose of this Construction Board of Appeals is that if anybody has a complaint against our building inspector, administrator, zoning administrator, or court enforcement, they go, they request a hearing with the Board of Appeals, and we go through the facts and the ordinances and the law to see if somebody aired, whether it's a police officer making code enforcement ticket, or if it's Mr. Scott Proflit.
How do we do this, 'cause I'm telling you right now, this has gotten, I mean, I've seen all these other communities that have tolerated it for just so long, and it's dumb, they're dumb.
Paul, we need to stop right now.
No, I'm not, I've, I've-
You need to explain, you cut him off.
We need to finish what we're talking about. We need to finish what we're talking about here.
So the Construction Board of Appeals for each governmental subdivision consists of not less than three, but not more than seven, basically, three members who have experience in construction code and zoning, et cetera, so. I would be taking recommendations, resumes, I'd like to put something together, obviously, to the Planning Commission before we make any decision on whom, you know, I don't necessarily want somebody that's not in the field, unless we just can't find bodies, then we'll talk about it, but.
Is there someone other than Scott?
Yes, so this Board of Appeals hears, hears and renders final decisions based on Scott's work, so it's about, it's extra accountability and transparency, so if you do think that Scott's doing such a terrible job, then we can have hearings, I don't care if it's weekly, monthly, whatever, but this is the proper protocol, for the, our code of law says that we have not been following, and we need to get in the line. This is one of the good things of rewriting the code, because now we found an error and that we can fix.
So, who picks, who picks?
I would take recommendations to the Planning Commission, which would then recommend to the village council.
So it would have to be someone that's familiar with construction and-
Correct, preferably.
Yes.
So you're, so you're telling me-
So I tried to, I don't know if- So I tried to, I don't know if in your copy you can see, but I tried to highlight a part, it's kind of grayer, and that's the special part we really wanna focus on. So a member of the Board of Appeals shall be qualified by experience or training to perform the duties of members of the Board of Appeals. A person may serve on the Board of Appeals for more than one governmental subdivision. If an enforcing agency refuses to grant an application for a building permit, or if the enforcing agency makes any other decision pursuant or related to this act or the code, an interested person or the person's authorized agent may appeal in writing to the boards to make a decision.
So you're saying we need to round up some people to write up a thing saying he didn't give them their, their proper?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying we are not following our own code, and I'm trying to get us in compliance. Therefore, we are putting together a Construction Board of Appeals so that we are in compliance with our own code. That will also hold people accountable.
Well, that's just it, we wanna hold him accountable because these people have.
Will they also be an employee of the village?
Not necessarily, preferably not. I'd rather have an independent third party.
Okay.
So you're trying to tell me that Saginaw, Brant, Brady, Chapin, and Marion all had to go through that appeals process? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
I, I don't have a, a clue what you're, cause you're saying.
My thing is, he was working for Brant, he's not anymore, he's working for Brady. You know what I'm talking about. Well, that's what we, we, we asked you to put this on the agenda, did we or did we not?
But it's not.
Did we put, ask you to put it on the agenda? I called you personally.
It cannot go on the agenda.
That's not true, you called every member of the council.
So you did that on purpose?
No, so our own bylaws say that any trustee shall have a right to add items to the regular agenda before it is approved, which would have been.
I called you a month ago about this, I told you to put it on the agenda.
And, and.
Asked you nicely.
And the president is the one that determines what's on the agenda. You, you have a chance, according to Appendixes Four Rules of Procedure for General Law Villages, to add it to the agenda.
So we have no say, is that what you're saying? He, he, he gets the final words?
That's not at all what I'm saying, I'm saying I follow the law.
So, we gotta go through a grievance process now to remove him. We wanna do a vote.
It is not the policy or the responsibility of the council to hire and fire people.
Well, that's his job, right?
That's his job, it's not us to vote, we're not, we don't make a decision, he makes the decision.
We have problems with him, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed.
Right now you could be sued, Paul.
I would like to respect the request that any discussion about my employment with the village be done in closed session.
I agree.
I think it should be done in open forums, everybody can hear it.
By law, according to the open, open meeting app, he has a right, if this is the discussion that you'd like to have, to go to closed session. Without, or else we face legal ramifications. We are opening ourselves up to a lawsuit if you continue this conversation, and that's all I'll say.
Well, the conversation needs to be continued, maybe not here, but maybe not at the time, but it needs to be done.
That's up to the council.
So are you, are you looking for a motion to approve the Board of Appeals, Construction Board of Appeals?
I'd like to move forward, and I'm, basically, we're going to move forward with this as part of our code rewrite. I'm looking for suggestions on people that you, size, which I can take to the Planning Commission and have them recommend whether they want three, five, or seven. And then if you know anybody in the field that you'd like to see on this board, please, uh, submit them to me, and I will get them to Planning Commission for, hopefully if it's not as soon as the next week, it'll be by next month, um, as we continue the code rewrite.
We have two people, so we'll begin to hold you.
We don't have nothing.
Can we, can we make a recommendation that you pick that person or not? I mean, not as a village employee, just.
You could, but I, I'm not gonna put myself in that position, um, without knowing enough.
Okay.
I'm not in that field. I'm gonna have you guys who know experts in the field. And I can think, you can think people around town who, you know, do the work.
How, how did we get away with this for so many years, and all of a sudden this is what we need?
Another great, yeah.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
Yeah.
This happens, and we've got a bazillion people complaining, and then all of a sudden you're just kinda pushing it under the rug while he says it's okay, so we don't put it on the agenda, we're not moving forward with it, and, and all these other places had this done away with, however you wanna say, but it, it needs to be addressed. We've been barking at it forever about it needs to be addressed.
Who's we?
It will be, but it's not.
Mrs. Jenderski, who's we?
I don't have to mention names, but there are several.
No, but you're saying, you're saying we, you're the only one.
How many people wanted to stand in front of the audience?
You are the only one.
No, I'm just voicing the public's opinion.
So you speak for everybody, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm speaking for half the people probably in here, I guarantee you that.
So, another one of the, so another one of the reasons, Mr. Koflu, I was told via rumors, based on probably coming from you, Paul, that he was being investigated by the state. I reached out to the Licensed Regulatory Affairs Office, that the state hears evidence that there is no permit or any investigation under his license numbers, thank you.
I, I received a text.
Please pass one down to Darcy and Mr. Kendall, please. Just further evidence that there is no investigation under, for Mr. Koflu, under any of his licenses for his.
It was a text I got, and I, I brought it to your attention, I'm glad you looked into it, but I'm telling you, if I have to go to Saginaw, Jonesville, Brant, Brady, Marion, and, and get some paperwork, I will.
We're talking in private, if you need to, not right now.
Can we get a motion from us for this?
Nope, I just wanted to make you aware of that, and we're gonna move forward. There's some things that we're changing in the Planning Commission code rewrite. Obviously, rental inspections is something we've done on the books since twenty twelve that hasn't been enforced in twenty years, so. Uh, they're gonna recommend to you that we eliminate rental inspections. Based, one, cause we're not doing it, and B, to take the liability off the village. Just little things like that that we're trying to clean up, that we found from years past, or decades past, I guess, at this point. So I just wanna keep you aware, and, you know, Thursday at five-thirty right here.
Item F, MML Core Legislative Principles.
So yearly the MML meets, and they come up with their core principles. This document which I provided to you provides the annual MML Board of Trustees and membership establish their core legislative principles for the year. It's a big picture names that support the state's prosperity from the bottom up. Ensuring local governments have the resources and tools to service residents now and into the future. Recognizes local government as the economic engine of this state and the foundation for regional and state prosperity. So, long story short, they wanna feel good about themselves. Here's their, uh, you know, community wealth, well-being, infrastructure, trust and belonging, finance and services. Again, I serve under the Finance and Services Committee. Um, so if you have anything you'd like to see changed as far as their legislative priorities, let me know by August eleventh, and I will submit it to MML on your behalf. And, uh, we'll see what they vote on, or what they, they normally just approve these pretty rubber stamped, but. Uh, physical design and walkability, public health and safety, environmental sustainability, arts and culture, local economic development, education, and lifelong learning are kind of the core principles. Lovey-dovey type stuff. And if you'd like to be a delegate, by all means, you may recommend somebody at this time.
I'm good.
Don't you already a delegate?
I'm on the Finance Committee, I'm not a delegate person.
Need anything else on this?
Pardon?
I need anything else on this?
Nope, if you have any recommendations or changes you'd like to see, just let me know by August eleventh.
Partner Reports, DPW.
On the water end, we pumped four point seven million gallons last month, that averages a hundred fifty-eight thousand gallons a day. We collect eleven copper samples for this year. They're turned in, and should be good for results back, and the residents will receive those results. On the sewer, we pumped five point one million gallons, a hundred seventy thousand gallons a day. West Walnut, we did have an issue with being bugged up from flushable wipes. We did have to pull the pumps and clean it out. On the streets, just routine patching, mowing, brush pickup, we did burn the brush pile. We have been doing line striping around town as the weather permits, parking lots, crosswalks, as we get time. Parks, we did plant twenty-one trees from Hart's grant from Consumers, wasn't it?
Yep.
We got all those planted, they're in both parks, a couple other public areas, a couple along the street. Twenty-one orange trees, so. And then we did clean up under the white pines in the park, and we did haul out fourteen dump truck loads of pine needles and cones and all that kind of material.
Don, I got a couple questions for you.
Sure.
How are you coming up with priorities in the village to direct our workers on what they're doing tomorrow?
Well, we have a work order system that we do, and then as certain things come up.
I understand things come up, right? But are you doing like a five-day schedule?
We usually have things, priorities during the week, but usually things get put in our work order system, and then.
Yeah, but, so my question is?
We have certain things we do at certain times of the month.
Okay, so like Monday through Friday, a weekly planner you use that are in your head, and, uh, and you wait for a phone call, or what?
No, we have a planner that we use, and right now, prioritize stuff.
Okay.
It's usually always subject to change.
And I understand you get phone calls, right? Out of the blue, and then all plans are changed. But if you have a plan, then, cause I get asked, what's our DPW do? Right, it's, now that I have this chair, really, what are they doing today?
Water system maintenance, sewer streets.
I understand that, I understand that. Is there, Hart sends a weekly, our weekly email on Fridays. Could you put together like the following Friday, so this Friday, for what, next week, the plan? Plan can change, but at least we have a plan in knowing what is priorities to get done. Does that make sense?
Usually, I mean, I would submit that to Hart, I don't know if the council would give. I haven't had that done before, I guess Hart's my boss, so.
I understand, but, and we're Hart's boss. But from dictating priorities, right, on, in the council, what's to be done from the DPW's side? Does that make sense? Just out of curiosity, would that be a problem to put something together?
I'd feel like to come out, and I, I keep a planner of all the work we've completed too, so. But we do have a work order system.
Right.
The daily schedule you do, you do stuff daily on a daily basis?
That's what I'm saying.
There's certain things you do every day.
What can I tell you, I think that's what he's asking.
You do mess digs every day, you do work orders every day, and we fill in with whatever is the priority during that time period.
And that's what I mean, so like on Fridays, you could send it out, a plan from Monday through Friday for the following week, and the plans change, I know a hundred percent, but at least, so we can have an idea.
I'll work with Hart, and I'll see what we can work with.
So, so, yeah, so we do have a SANA, which is our kinda online processing work order. So we have an in-process, completed, follow-up, uh, you know, utility billing changes, we do have special projects, we do have light grass code enforcement section, you know, for instance, so like today and tomorrow, please check this house for meter number three-three oh eight four oh eight, last ride five thirteen. Thursday, please turn off a certain address and get a final read, meter number. So we're trying to match meters to every house, so that when we do have water leaks or water billing issues, that was accurate as possible. Check this house for the size of the pool, for their sewer credit. Uh, we have a new bench, or new bench arriving for old, or new board for a bench, a bounty, uh, ordered for the Parks Committee. Don, please check the grass at five whatever, West Hosmer. New generator at Bar and Gas Line needs to be painted and added drip leg, I mean, so, and these are all just put in, and, um, so I kinda can, I can see what they're doing and what they're working on. Obviously, like you said, you know, the first week of the month, I know they're picking up brush, you know, I know when they're, they're testing water. I know when they're reading, you know, water meters, et cetera, so. Today, they, they cleaned out all the, you know, the eaves on our roof, so then we can flood, but I didn't put that in there. There, there are ways.
Check flood bulbs, it's just stuff that you do.
But, but maybe we need to digitize it so that there's record, and, and if you just let me know, I can do that.
Alright, we'll figure something out.
My opinion is, is that we hired Don after months to run our DPW. I trust Don, and we, he does a great job. He's an employee on this village, therefore Hart is his superior. That's who he should be reporting to. He doesn't need to report to us, uh, council members weekly.
I wouldn't say report, what I was asking is, what do we, what's priorities?
So, I think what you're asking for is, you wanna see more on the DPW report in the monthly meetings.
More itemized, what do you think?
Yeah.
You can call Hart if you wanna know what's going on, and I'm sure you could call Don too. You could probably ask any one of these DPW guys.
We just try to highlight it, I don't think you all know everything.
I don't.
Right. Did you guys do a great job, Tom?
The drains and ditches out there, some of these people were asking me, I mean, are the people actually responsible for the drainage tower underneath their driveways? If you're gonna dig that all out?
That is the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay, is there, I don't know, I went out there and looked at it, and there's standing water, and they come up with this new egg, new virus, and West Walnut being found, and there's water backing up, people toss it, I'm hearing.
I don't know about backing up the houses.
That's what I'm hearing, so, I'm just going by what I'm hearing.
So if they're not draining, are we going to that homeowner and saying you need to get your drain picked up?
It's, it's draining, it's just every culvert out there was put in by a different person at a different time, it's a different level. To fix that problem correctly, you need to actually adjust every culvert, and I don't know how most people are gonna take that. It is functioning, not perfectly, but it is.
I seen eight inches of water out in front of something, at least, it's standing there.
But after an inch of rain, is it flowing? Yes, it's working, but if, but you see a single wall.
Then you fill it in up here and tape it off down there.
Well, but you, you go down there, I won't mention an address, there's a single wall plastic culvert that's too narrow for their driveway. Stone cream washes out of their driveway and plugs the ditch up, is that the village's responsibility?
Well, I guess I, but maybe, maybe get Gordon's guy or somebody down and say, hey, it's your responsibility, clean it up. Or have the rest of the neighbors complain, something.
So the, the ditching on the culverts, driveway culverts, is if we don't maintain the ditches, those culverts plug up. Is putting the culvert in the homeowner's responsibility, a hundred percent. But if it's, the ditch is not maintained, okay, is that the homeowner's responsibility? When it's the village's, when it's the village's responsibility to maintain that ditch? I do deal with MDOT every day on drainage, all over the state, and MDOT gave up on it because they weren't maintaining their ditches. And it also takes away on CMP culvert, it ta, it can take twenty years off the life, right? Because the water's not, it's staying submerged. So, on Ithaca, when we go out to do that, is you ditch it, invert to invert, and we have judders, judder work? We just flush out the culverts, and go right on down the line.
But we ran that in the past where the village has jetted someone's culvert.
I.
It's failed, now they.
I understand that a hundred percent. But, so my culvert, okay, at my house, is plastic, door wall, and I'm sure there's debris in it. So, if you inspect, now if you see a CMP that's all rusted away, you don't put a judder on it, you let the homeowner know, right? But to work in coordination and jet those culverts out when they're ditched is the way to properly do it. Does that make sense?
We'll get their permission, but then, you as a council, what if, say like yours, your whole, say your tile is failing or your whole property? The village comes, tells you it needs to be replaced.
Then it should be replaced, because.
And give them so many days, and then if he doesn't, have them, have the village do it in billing.
Well, at the end of the day, though, on something like that, it, the village can replace it, and you turn it on and put it on tax bill. We can't stop the drainage from, for our roads, the ditches are to drain. If somebody's tile is, is failing, or failed, that's where, it's a homeowner's responsibility.
It's functioning, but there's gonna be some that are gonna be replaced out there.
It's an interesting precedent to send, send, we could do it on other things, but let's just start doing work around the village and throwing out people's taxes, and they won't know until they have to pay their taxes. I mean, some municipalities like Sutton's Bay Village of Sutton's Bay, that in general, ditches are the responsibility of the owner of the property upon which the ditch is located. Property owners are also responsible for any culverts that pass under private driveways or other privately owned structures, or any covered ditches or drains. Best practices to keep the area mown and free from vegetation. I think this is a great debate for the Planning Commission as they go through the code rewrite.
Well, think about it, though, I mean, if it's not draining, there's one person that's, that's the problem, and give him X amount of time to.
That's it.
To replace it, if he doesn't, do it in billing. I mean, that's just the way it should go, just like that.
You gentlemen should take it to the Planning Commission, so we can get this.
But at the same time, because of this complaint, um, we did have Spicer come out and shoot the ditch. There are two high points, so we can do some relatively clean ditching, um, here and here, along Ithaca Road, that shouldn't be too much. Uh, Mr. Freed got a, got us a quote, three hundred dollars an hour from Eric Construction to clean it out. Um, shouldn't take more than a day. If you guys wanna approve that tonight, we can do that.
And.
I made a motion.
I'd come up with some kind of public education program too, because if you go and look out there, not everybody, but a lot of people rake their leaves down the ditch, and then cut brush, and then throw it down there.
True story.
And that'll happen in, in some areas, I.
But you, you drive by them, you looked at a lot of them.
Right, but also a lot of the debris is.
That ditch was clean four years ago.
And it's mo, I know when the ditch was clean, and Tito did a pretty.
Tito didn't clean it.
Who did it?
Everett, we hired to do it, we tried to do it, we had Everett excavating, cleaning.
Okay.
I think it was about three thousand dollars.
But it wasn't.
It was clean both sides of the road.
Yeah. Yeah, but it wasn't really with the laser, laser. I was out there after they did it.
We clean culvert to culvert. That laser ain't gonna help you when one's high and one's low.
No, 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 no. It's invert to invert on the culvert.
We, we get the ditch, I'll invert and.
Okay.
Sure, culverts are high.
Yeah, I understand a hundred percent, but if you go invert to invert, which it was not done last time, does that make sense, Mitch?
Yeah, the ditch is deeper than the culvert though. If you look at that draft, unless you reset that culvert.
It's not gonna.
Okay, anyway.
Get her done.
All right. Anybody have a motion to support three hundred dollars an hour from Eric Construction?
I make a motion.
To, I, I mean, this is up to you guys to decide.
I think it's a good idea.
Are there more, more roles than Ithaca that are doing the same?
He's making a motion.
Make a motion, make a motion. To hire three hundred dollars an hour air construction day.
Yeah, I'll second.
Get it done.
And I'll, this is where it gets.
Roll call vote, please.
This is where it's, I mean, should you abstain because it's your property, should you not because you're gonna benefit directly? This is where it gets a little fishy. But that's your guys.
So we have to do this with a re.
Why do we have to do that? Is that?
Roll call vote, please.
Exactly, exactly.
Jamie Kendall? Darcy McSwain?
No, right now, I can't. I, I gotta.
Paul Junderski?
Absolutely, yes.
Edgar Tidoff?
No.
Michael Nesbit?
No.
Kathy Harris?
No.
Troy Freed?
I'm not doing it right now.
Why are we saying no?
They don't want to drain, they want the water to stand in front of your house. These are the guys you got voted for.
No, I guess. The vote hasn't been hit. President.
Then we got another issue.
Police Department report.
I'm not done. Drain Don Hadler, Drain Don Hadler Road out with the.
You're done.
How do you figure?
You were done. Police Department report, please.
All right. Schedules go on this plan usually. Every weekend's being covered, nights and everything like that. Um, fifteen, Michelle's in, out of school right now, so we even want her to cover night shifts when Ethan's off. Uh, call wise, nothing too major to really report on unless you have any questions about any of the calls that are listed on there. Uh, the pistol permits went down this month. What's going on in there? Got us on the guns or what?
Slow in school right now. We gotta wait till, we gotta wait till, we gotta wait till, uh, the whole season come on. I took a week off, I took a week off, I did, I did.
So it is. There's one guy that comes in the summer, he just truck pulls the park on it, I know exactly who he is, I just start typing it up. Comes in, I mean, he's, he's, half of these gun permits has been from him. Pardon. Mr. Hart?
I don't think.
You know exactly what I'm talking about, yeah. Any question about any of the calls listed on the sheet? Reference to a previous call, uh, with the, um, spray painting incident, the three juveniles, we sent over petitions to court, so they will be going in front of a, a judge here shortly, once it gets, um, processed. So all three of them were sent forward on that. Um, got word the truck should be done by the end of this month, build wise. Um, so hopefully we should, I should be picking up by the end of this month and getting it to the, the shop, M and R to get the electronics put in it and get, getting the stickers put on it, uh, jets. That should hopefully take just a couple more weeks after that. So probably around mid-August, we should be seeing it on the road hopefully, if everything goes right. Um, I had a little bit of vacation, so I was gone for a little bit. Went to Branson for a week. Wasn't a vacation because of the ball tournament, but. Um, I know exactly what you're gonna ask. It just came to my mind. I did talk to the guy from, uh, Parks and Rec to put up a post for cameras. He's fine with it. He said, just when we figure out what we're gonna do, just call him, let him, so he lets guys know that, hey, there's gonna be work done up over there, so they know that's what's going on. You guys are probably looking at me to know what we're talking about. We come forward and got some cameras to put in front of the entrance to lumber, the, the rail trail on, uh, Lumberjack Park. The idea they had was to put a post up. The two cameras will cover the parking lot for the haunted house, the pavilion, straight down the rail trail, the entrance to the boat ramp right there and to the, to the right there, all the way. I don't know exactly how much they're gonna cover, but the idea is basically like this much area that's looking at through both of them, so.
Cameras covers three sixty and the infrared, whatever, but if they work really good, we're gonna try to see if we can get a couple more for the, for the other parks, like a testing thing, basically.
So basically what we're, what we would have to do is get a, they had to look into what size posts from DPW need to get and then what it would cost to put it in the ground. That would be something that you guys would have to approve on, since you gotta buy the post. Uh, but Hart looked into the cameras and it looks like we can get them to where they're, they just directly go right into our, my work phone.
We'd have to attach them so that they pick up four, the four G, like a Verizon or eighteen, T Tower. Obviously, we're not gonna have Wi-Fi in the park necessarily unless a neighbor is willing to throw us their five G or something. Uh, but it should be able to connect and it should be able to set it up to both police phones so that we have, uh, evidence of any wrongdoing.
Yeah, so something happens.
The only concern I have is the SIM card is not many gigabytes, but at the same time, we could either purchase larger gigabytes or because it loops, I think every seven days, we could just upload it to a police, um, external hard drive.
Hold it for so many days.
We have plenty of room and, and if we need it, we have it, so.
Yeah, and we can hold it for so many days and then after that, we'll just get rid of it, kind of like we do with our body camera footage.
Well, I just think it's a good, I hope everybody thinks it's a good idea with the vandalism and the rail trail and the bathroom down there. I heard somebody living underneath the bridge down there and I'll start to.
He's in a car. It's the same guy's been here before. He came back, now he's got a car.
Just a good idea. You guys can be there without being there.
Mr. Kribic?
Yeah.
And as far as the vandalism, that case has been referred to juvenile family division of the court system, so.
I'm hearing the restroom were even vandalized.
Pardon?
The restroom they even here were vandalized a couple times.
Correct, yep. It's over a thousand but under twenty thousand in vandalism for that particular restroom.
Hopefully looking right down there, it, it does away with them having to, like, a couple times a day like Mr. Westlock had asked, so see if it works.
Well, it's a deterrent, you know, especially if it's gets known that those ones actually work, you know, so. But the big thing is being able to have that footage sent to our phone, so if something happens at the night, it's going to their phone and they don't have to contact me to get it from my personal, from me personally, they can access it themselves. So if there was an incident that happened, they don't know who the suspect is, they can look at the footage and find out right away just based on the footage. You don't get the ball rolling on that. We're not waiting for forever. At least we have something now, so, um, we'll just get the numbers on a post and what it would cost and then come back with the next month on that to get the final approval on that.
Did someone donate these cameras?
Hold it.
Hold it.
What? What?
You bought the cameras?
Yeah, I did.
So they're donated, they're not.
Yeah, they're donated, yeah. You donated the cameras, we just gotta pay for the post and what it cost to put them up.
If you see his name on payment of claims next month, just know it's for the cameras.
I just don't wanna come back in the month or two or what, down the road and ask him for reimbursement for the cameras and we didn't approve and didn't give them.
Right, it was donated.
It's all donated. Yep. Any questions? Good.
Inspector Code Enforcement Report.
Hello, everyone. We had six permits issued for the month of June. Probably one of them mechanical permits, the other was a electrical. Uh, there were eight complaints that were taken care of, five of those are resolved. Had to reopen one on Clint and, um, write that up for the mess that's being started again. I did receive a plea from the chief, so. That one will be rechecked on the twelve. Um, that's what I have. Any questions?
I got a question. Why is, uh, mechanical A C a hundred and fifteen dollars and then right below it, mechanical A C a hundred and thirty-five dollars?
Uh, there was more than just the A C done and the permits are based on, go ahead.
I personally think all this is money grab, okay? I don't get it. I don't, it's, I mean, charge ten dollars is what we should do? When, when people's A C goes out, they, their elect, their hot water goes out and then we go out and kick them again when they're down, personally?
Permits are based on the State of Michigan's permit application.
Correct.
Michigan makes up prices, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but why is one fifteen and one thirty-five?
Because one application had more items on it. There are, there's, let me.
More items?
Yeah, let me, let me finish. On page two of the mechanical applications, there's an area, area that the contractor checks to tell us what he's doing at the site. And each one of those has a fee. So based on what they're doing, that makes the fee at the end. So one may be higher, one may be lower. If they're doing both the exact same thing, it would be identical.
And that's just your discretion on?
It's not my discretion.
No?
If, if the State of Michigan sets requirements, the prices are already set on the permit. The contractor fills out the permit when they apply and they're basically setting their fee. When my inspector goes out, they verify that what they did is on there. There are times when they've done a lot more with, than what is on there and then they're told they have to adjust the permit, but that is very rare. In fact, I've been doing this for almost forty years and I can only remember two permits that ever had to be changed, um, for something like that.
People are also complaining like with the hot water heater. I mean, the price of everything is going crazy. Seeing anywhere between eight hundred and fifteen hundred dollars for a hot water heater and then they have to pay more again. It's already kind of an emergency when you run out of hot water, don't have a hot water heater and they got a full permit.
I feel like that's the weakness.
More money, A C unit, more money. These, these people can't even afford it and then you, you nail them for another hundred, hundred fifty bucks.
Unfortunately, the state of Michigan requires permits for a water heater replacement. It's not my required requirement in the state of Michigan.
And they named the price.
Pardon?
And they named the price that you charged.
The State of Michigan set the price for everything.
The price is set on the application. If you guys want to visit, the price is on the applications and drop them down, that's on you. But I don't have the right to adjust.
It's just hard to.
The planning commission did look at prices as far as the zoning side. I imagine they will get to that as far as the code side as well.
It's just hard to, I mean, people maintaining their houses and where, you know, roofs and windows and, you know.
Well, we, there was a change made to the roofing permits. If nothing structural is being done, if trusses aren't being repaired, if rafters aren't being replaced or repaired, if cheating isn't being done on the whole roof, they aren't required to get a permit for a roof. And then it's a base fee of a hundred dollars. That's it.
Hundred now, okay. Okay, 'cause I think my mother-in-law was, I think, I almost think she was about two hundred. I don't know. The price changed a couple times, so I was, I'm confused about the prices.
Council, planning commission, I don't, I don't set any of the prices. I just act on what's there.
We're just trying to say so many people are complaining because, I mean, they're already hit for eight hundred to fifteen hundred dollars for a hot water heater and then you nail them for another hundred, two hundred dollars to put it in because you need a fee on top of somebody installing it?
We have to pay the inspector.
I get it, but I'm just, just.
That's what their pay comes out of.
I'm just saying what's being, being said, but, uh, the junk vehicle around North Street, I didn't get that one. I went by there. I didn't see no junk vehicle out there. It says, it's not saying complying, not saying result, five twenty-nine.
Old one on North is gone.
Yeah, I don't see it there. I didn't see it there, junk vehicle. As far as that Ritten, Rittenberg, I mean, can't, when you go down to court, can't, he, he's a hoarder. Yeah, I know he's a hoarder. I mean, can't the judge issue something so he, he can't do, it's, it's terrible there again. It's the same thing as it was before. We don't cross look at like church. It's just starting over.
Right in the corner of a, full, uh. Flint.
Yeah. Kind of where San Justin comes out, right?
Two yellow shopping cart driveway.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Public comment.
Okay, guys, I got some pictures. I got a major problem on Hosmer with this phase one thing. I have before and afters. Don's been over quite a few times. I want a timeframe on when this work is gonna get done. I've been dealing with this since May seventeenth of twenty twenty-three when they first took those big maples out. And you've probably all seen the.
These maples?
Yeah, the mess they left for four months. They finally cleaned it up on September nineteenth of twenty twenty-three. Then we were told it was in the paper, they weren't gonna do no more work, no lines till following spring. Well, here they come down Hosmer in the fall. So we are left with the mess all winter. I said, okay. And then they come through and they finish it and the place looks like a dump. I got standing water, the sidewalk caved in. I got two-thirds of the front of the house is gravel where it should be grass. The road, Sanderson, is all gravel now going to Hosmer where it should have been asphalt. It's in, when it rains, the water does not absorb. It just puddles. And I had three of you guys over there already checking this out. It, I mean, it's crazy. In, in the grass, what grass it is, it looks like a cornfield. It's all gravel and sand. I mean, it's just one big mess. I had a beautiful lot there and now it is just junk. So I wanna know, Don says they're out of town. When they bring their equipment back, they'll get it done. You're talking they're gonna have to do some tiling.
As Mitch said, there, there will be a punch list created and that they will work everything off at once.
I'm thinking the whole front of it needs to be tiled. Then I had an MDOT car pull up today. I don't know if it was a guy or a girl, got out and looked down Hosmer. Well, they pulled right off. Now there's tire tracks through the front lawn again. It's like I'm tired of going out and fixing it. It's just a mud pit. Sidewalk's caving in, it's, it, from the bucket hitting it and that, it's losing.
You can see where the bucket hit it and lifted it up on the other side, not water.
Oh, it's loosening the whole thing up. I mean, it loosened it all up.
And honestly, the concrete, I'm a concrete guy and you could see where it was still.
It was, it was.
Somebody did a hurry up job and when they had the cream on the top, they just broomed it quick and they didn't wait for it to dry and it.
That was beautiful sidewalk.
It's pretty, it's pretty obvious.
The good news is we took video cameras of every address and every address that was altered will be returned to better or if not the same or.
Okay, 'cause there's before and after pictures there. It just makes me sick. It was a beautiful front. It was.
You could, simply put some drain tile in front of it, it wouldn't hurt it. And then like they had the felt still on the drains out there. I mean, that was probably holding some of it back, so.
Yeah, but you can tell where it's puddling too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Maybe just throw some dirt in there to push it out, maybe put a tile in there along the road so it comes to the catch basin or something.
sidewalk needs to be fixed.
Eric Construction is aware of this.
Yeah, I, I didn't notice the sidewalk, but I'll take a look at it, but the yard definitely needs to be touched up. I agree.
I, I need my grass back. It's all gravel. And then they trunched it. My God, I looked out there. Dude's got laser lava going. I said, what the hell are they doing now? Well, they did a trench from where the new road ended, across from my property, across Sanderson Road to the drain. I mean, it works, but any way to fix it.
I think that's a short, short term fix.
They, they just, they have to relieve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you can see from Craig's driveway all the way across. It just drains all the way across.
I do know initially they had sediment bags in the catch base.
Yeah, that was over on Craig's property. Yeah, that, that was a mess too.
Your grass seed washed away, so I'm gonna say probably your whole yard has to up front.
Yeah, yeah, and that stuff when it gets hard.
We'll address it.
It's, it's a mess, Saul.
Thank you, Joe.
I will look at the side.
Okay, yep. Just letting you guys know what I'm dealing with, Saul.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mitch will get.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Mitch will get right on that. I'm serious.
Who's next? Anybody?
So my name is Adrian Cervini and I am now the planning commission. Been there for four or five years. Uh, I'd like to invite you guys next Wednesday, or next Wednesday? Thursday, I'm sorry. Thursday at five thirty, if you would like to continue the conversation regarding, um, ditches and things like that. Then of course, we're going over the ordinances and you can look over the places and if you would like to review those and give us some recommendations, we'd appreciate that. So five thirty next Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cervini.
Thank you.
I'd like to take note to the Saint Joe Commission. They got a meeting a week from today and it's all about.
Public comment, not council.
They have it down there a week from today and we didn't know where the, the fire, fire engine was going. Probably it's coming here.
Anybody else?
Nobody else is standing up while I'm speaking. But it said it was supposed to be objections and written objections. So if you had a comment, I'm already hearing that you can actually come and vocalize and, and express your opinions there. You don't actually have to do it right there, so hopefully.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Meeting adjourned.